All right, it is 10 o'clock and we will open the Kerrville City Council Workshop at this time. And good morning to everybody. Discussion, consideration, possible action for wastewater, water and utility projects. Who's up first?
I'll do a brief introduction, Mayor. Thank you this morning. Stuart, go ahead and come on up. They, uh, this is really a follow-up to your fall discussion. As you recall, we had gone through a multi-year effort for water wastewater master planning and updating, really updating and really fully revising that plan. A lot of good work that went into that. And as you recall, we left you with a little bit of a cliffhanger and 100-plus million-dollar project needs over the next 25 to 30 years. And so today is really a follow-up to that in looking at what are the highest priority projects according to our great professionals within the Public Works Department? And then also some potential funding strategies. So we have brought in Ann Berger, our financial advisor, to be able to talk through some of the strategies that we've been brainstorming here over the last couple of months since we looked at that water wastewater line. So without further ado, Mr. Barron.
Good morning, Mayor Council. Do you all have a good weekend? First of all, let's get all the press. It was great to be on.
Oh, it was horrible.
Yours was horrible. Well, there's a stock show today, so if you want to go out there and see how the kids are still doing. It's not that bad, huh?
Kids and animals?
Yeah, kids and animals. That's where I'll be heading after this, so. But we do have Ms. Berger here today. She does have, she has a schedule that she has to keep, so she got here by 11:00. So I'm going to work through my presentation and I'll answer all the questions that I think are pertinent upfront. And then y'all, if you have any more, feel free to, after she does her presentation, I'll circle back around and we'll get in more details about anything, in more depth, whatever depth you want to talk about on the different projects. But I am trying to push through to have her enough time to get you all the information y'all need for her part of it, which is going to be after the needs part of the presentation. So, um, over the last 15 years, the city has done about five wastewater master plans, six if you include the Kerrville Comp Plan. And those water wastewater master plan address physical needs out in our system, growth needs, and then also the aging infrastructure. You're going to see all of those in this presentation today. Each one of those topics, we have some projects on that we're going to bring to y'all and say, hey, we, these are some items that really need, have come to the top of the heap that we need to address sooner than later. Within their master plan, they showed a project there of about $115 million. We're not here today to ask for $115 million. We've scaled that back a little bit. But we did comb through the master plans, looking at all the projects that they had listed on there. And then also got with the superintendent and found out really on the ground level, what are they seeing? What is the big items out there that they're dealing with daily or weekly, or sometimes more often than that, that they think really needs to come to the top of what their project list would look like? And so each one of the divisions submitted me a report and we talked through them. Fortunately, a lot of them are on the wastewater water master plan. I mean, that's kind of the idea of that plan, right? Unfortunately, some of those plans are a little bit dated. The wastewater plant was done in 2012, their last master plan, where they actually looked at the plant itself just for that plan. The water master plan was done in 2014. The most recent water and wastewater, which we spent a little bit more time on the collection and distribution system, was done in 2022. So they all kind of dovetail together, but some of them are getting a little aged now. And so you'll see some of these projects aren't within those master plans. This will start out at the wastewater plant, the water reclamation plant. The project on the left there is the FEB lift station. As you can see, the top of that pipe on the left-hand side of the screen is missing. And there's a temporary hose that goes down into the lift station. That temporary hose is how we're operating the lift station right now. The one on the right-hand side, the pipe on the right-hand side, has a small hole in it. And so this lift station is out of commission right now. It also has some spalding concrete and so on. We've known that this lift station has kind of been on the blink, if you will, or aging list. But we've allowed it to get this far along because it is at the plant. We have operators there all the time. We think we can operate it the way we are, but we don't want it to go on long-term.
What is this supposed to be, what is this lift station pumping to?
So during the day, excuse me, the wastewater plant takes in enough wastewater, takes in all of the city's wastewater, right? Well, in the nighttime, from probably about 11:00 until 5:00 a.m., not much wastewater is being generated. And so we store the wastewater during the day so we can feed the plant over those hours that nobody is producing any wastewater. This lift station is how that happens. So we have a big pond out there that we put the water in during the day and then overnight we pump out of that, out of that pond, back into the wastewater plant.
And this is one of the ones that's actually at the plant. It's not one of our collection system lift stations.
Right. The operator, it sits right outside their operator room. And we can, it's easy to monitor, as easy as any of them are. So we don't let them get this bad. Typically, you're going to see some that are pretty close later in the presentation, but I'll walk through all of them pretty quickly and then we'll come back and get into more details. On the right-hand side is Clarifier 3. It's at the wastewater treatment plant as well, or water, I always, I'm sorry, wastewater is the old term, water reclamation plant. And you can see, doesn't look great, but TCQ rules if it's called short-circuiting. When the water goes over the top of that, the second row of metal there, that's considered a short circuit and they don't allow for that. That's a violation. So we're real close, it's rusting down, it's getting pretty close to short-circuiting through that side. And if that happens, we would just go put a little patch on it, but we don't want to do that long-term. That's nothing that's going to be something we can fix long-term. More items out at the wastewater, or water reclamation plant. Filter Gallery is on the left-hand side. It needs to be upsized according to the water wastewater master plan to meet our permit. And the RAS pump station, it's going to, it needs new piping inside that system to, just because of the age of the wastewater plant, things are starting to wear out. Most of our pipe has a life expectancy of about 50 years. Pumps are closer to 15, probably, depending on how much they get used. So they just use up. You know, I've been here, I'm getting pretty close to my life expectancy apparently, too. I've been here a little over 20 years, so, you know, it's something everybody's got to consider, right? We all wear out. Now, here's the list of those projects.
It's real sad.
Isn't that sad? You know, you can see it in, right? But it's a true state of.
Hang in there, hang in there.
Go ahead, Joe, say something.
We're going to try to lead him through his next hour.
Oh, we're good for a little while longer. We'll wait until the pipe falls apart here. So this is a list of those projects that we just walked through. The FEB lift station's about a $500,000 project. Clarifier 3, the second project we talked about. Both of those two are in the wastewater water master plan from the 2012. As a matter of fact, the first four of those are with the filters and the RAS pumps. So those are all identified within that project or within that master plan. The two of them on here that were not, and I did not take pictures of them, and I can go out and get some pictures if you'd like, is the Headworks Step Filters or Step Screens. And that was built right when I got here, so it's probably 18-years-old. And they're needing to be replaced as well. It's just a matter of cleaning the filter screen. So let me pick up the speed a little bit because I do want to give. This is at the water treatment plant. This is Nimitz Dam. We've changed sides of town now, so jump over here. It has some spalding and cracking on the concrete there. Luckily, it's not a big expensive project. We have about $50,000 to go in there, slated to go in there and fix some of that cracking and get some of the vegetation off the dam itself. We just don't want it to get any worse. It is noted by TCQ typically when they come. Any vegetation on a dam is not good. The roots get in there and start pulling it apart. It always gets a note.
You're aware that that dam failed at one time?
Yes, sir.
Expiration date.
It was a different type of dam, but it, yes, it had catastrophic failure. So luckily, they went back with something better and we're going to, we're going to take as good care of it as we can, so that doesn't happen again. The picture on the left here is at the filter gallery. You can see that little line of rust on the filters there. That is the kind of the water level on the inside of it. And so you can see it's starting to rust all the way through the steel and the hood there right behind it, which is rust-colored as well. Those are the components that we will be changing out on that. All the concrete there is still good in the filter gallery. It's more of how the metal components. See, it's a kind of a theme here. Most of what you're seeing today are metal components. It doesn't like chlorine, it doesn't like wastewater, and so it's just a matter of it going through its life cycle. This is the bottom of the golf ball tank. It needs to be painted.
Which golf ball tank?
River Hills, the round one.
But we have, I mean, metal components are what have to be used. There's not something that's better, that doesn't do these things?
Depends on the application. Most of what you're seeing here, metal is still the best application. In our piping system, when we get to the water distribution side of it, we are getting away from ductel iron pipe. We haven't been using that for the last 20 or 30 years. So that is, that component is, we wouldn't be replacing it.
Not for something like this, though?
Inside the wet wells of these lift stations, there's nothing better yet. Stainless steel would be the next thing. But it's partially, part of the reason is, is it flexes in there with the pumps coming on and off and the PVC can't take the torque to those pumps. And so it has to have something very rigid to hold it together. Unfortunately, steel is, or not necessarily steel, but ductel iron is that in that way. And they are relatively corrosion resistant, surprisingly. I mean, it just gets to the place where it's worn out. Okay, here's the cost for the water production piece of it. This is by far the most inexpensive component that we have that we're showing today, our plant facility. If I walk through each one of those, they're about $300,000 to $300,000. One thing that I did not go over is the generator barn there. That was, if I had to pick one thing that I could cut out of this presentation, so only $115,000, maybe we wouldn't build a generator barn. But we're buying new generators right now for our components. It's easier to keep them in good shape than it is to fix them after they've gone bad. Those generators are anywhere from 200,000 to 300,000. Some of them are $500,000. It's a whole lot easier to keep them in good shape than to go back and fix them. So I went ahead and plugged it in. Okay, water collection side, or excuse me, wastewater collection side. You're going to see some different projects here. Let's get the slide on my sheet. So as you can imagine, this is out at the airport lift station. James Avery, new facility dumps into this lift station. You can see that that middle pipe there, there's no way to work on that. When it fails, we're going to have to do the bypass system like we've done on the other ones. There's no way to loosen those bolts. It's used up. So that's a picture of the single pipe in the center and the whole, the dual pipes, both of them, all lift stations have two pumps in them. That's a picture on the left-hand side of the same lift station. And then on the right-hand side, that's just a picture of some of the, they call them rags inside those lift station. They all kind of get weaved together and it's a big bunch of yuck.
Do we get any support from county on any of this? I mean, I know it's city, city area.
No, ma'am. The ratepayers are who take care of it?
The pipes that it's showing here on the left and in the center, reality, how long do they have?
It's a loaded question, Mayor.
I mean, they look like they've had it now.
They're past their end of their useful life, so it.
It could go any time.
It could go at any time.
So that's what it looks like one day, and then I'll go back to this present, to that picture. And that's what they looked like the next day. It just depends on when it fails. And all, those are inside the lift station. So the pipes underground don't look that bad to give you some peace of mind. Lift stations are an awful environment, a lot of corrosive gases. That's what's eating this up. It also eats up the concrete, unfortunately. It eats up everything in there, the electrical, the concrete, the pumps, everything. Those rags that you saw the picture of, when they get stuck inside the pump because the pump's spinning, it'll spin up those rags and that's what puts the torque on the pipe. Well, the torque is what turns on these upper pieces and that's what keeps them flexing and that's what makes them fail. That and their age. Here's some history here. These are fiberglass manholes. They were, the city was putting these in just as I was coming on as the assistant, whatever it was back then, wastewater manager, I believe. Now, we were trying fiberglass manholes because of the corrosion thing. Can we try something different? Is there a better mousetrap out there? Turns out, they don't erode. They weren't great for that. Unfortunately, they flex. And as they flex, these are out in traffic, as they flex, they get weaker and weaker and weaker and as dump trucks and things drive over them, they eventually fail. And so we've gone back in and retrofitted a couple of them. I think there's about 16 more that need to be retrofitted. It's a project you'll see here, 16 or maybe 17, on this list. But it, there's a component that we need to get rid of some. If there's a fiberglass manhole and it's not in traffic, then we leave it because it doesn't, you know, we don't, we're not fixing things that aren't in need of being fixed, so. So I'll go through the wastewater collection system. This, the ones that I just presented to you are items, the item 2, 3, 4, no, 2 and 3, and then, yeah, 2 and 3. The Nap Road Lift Station, Force Main and Gravity Sewer. That particular project, I didn't take any pictures of because it's a new project. We have gone out to bid for this project. You may remember that. That's going to provide wastewater capacity to Nap Road Lift Station. Nap Road is where we're able to grow to our west, out towards the Ingram area, out towards Yogi Bear, out towards Middle Run, all of those components. We have not allowed people to tie onto our wastewater system out there because there's no additional capacity in our system. So as we've started at the wastewater treatment plant, we've built the system up through Legion Lift Station, then we got to behind HEB, which is Jefferson Lift Station, and now we're moving to Nap Road. We've been growing progressively that direction to allow more capacity in that area. This is the next project. This particular project was bid, is it end of November?
It was right after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, right after, at the end of November, the bid came at $4,895,000. We don't have enough money right now to cover the bid. If council says, hey, this sounds like a good idea, the presentation today, we do want to move forward with the funding option for some of these things, this will be in front of y'all next Tuesday. The bid is good through the end of the month. And we, not to say that we can't rebid it in the future if y'all need more time to consider it, but this is one that would be, this is one of the reasons we're here today and not two weeks from now.
So this one, Nap Road, as you recall, is partially, the funding is partially leveraged through the Water Development Board. So you recall, there's about $3 million of Water Development Board funding that has already been at least tentatively allocated and approved by Water Development Board for this project.
How much, three?
Approximately 3 million.
So what is that, why do I have 4, 8, 9, 5, and then over on the other side, the estimated cost of 2?
That's more cost.
The remainder balance.
That's the balance.
That's beyond the Water Development Board budget.
Okay.
And it does add up to a little bit more than that because we do need the contingency and there's some engineering costs in there as well that we're trying to, not reimburse for, but we're accounting for the whole project. Okay? I think that walks through, you have any other? Now, you can see the master plan dates that were brought there. These are, most of them are on 2022, so that's the most recent master plan when we just now completed. Two of them that are not is the Broadway Lift Station and the Shriner Park, both of those two. Broadway Lift Station was outfitted with new pumps about four years ago, but they didn't change any of the piping then. And so the piping is getting in bad shape now and it needs to be updated as well. And then the Shriner Park Lift Station, the pumps are too small out there and they're just a pump upgrade.
Is the Broadway Lift Station actually on Water Street? Is that that?
Yes, sir, at that little park, little intersection there.
The World War I Memorial Park.
Yes, sir. Okay. We'll talk about water distribution. Water distribution is a little bit simpler than some of the other projects right now from the superintendents, the superintendent Henry and Bill that I've talked to. So their big thing is galvanized pipe. When it fails, it fails big. You can see each one of these is a galvanized, or not galvanized, ductel iron pipe, excuse me.
What is it?
Cast iron ductel iron.
Cast iron, yes.
When it fails, it doesn't just fail a little bit. You can see those are huge holes in the pipe and it blows out sections of the street. They have, they've identified four replacement of this cast iron pipe. Have them on the next slide, bring them forward. One is, the first one on Galbreth, it's actually in Galbreth from Florence to Culberson. That is part of the wastewater master plant, or water wastewater master plant. It was project number two. I want to tell you a little bit more about that one because that's not the whole project. And if you go back and research my numbers here, you're going to find out that this is smaller than that project. I didn't fund the whole project because we wanted to use some of the monies for other pieces of it, but this is a component of it. It's not the whole project, it's just that little piece there. And then the other ones, there, you can read through them, cast iron water main on Quinlan Street from Stadium Tanks to Main Street. This next one is the water main on Water Street. It's from Washington to Tyvee. This project is green in here because it is just like Nap Road. We have it engineered, it's designed, it's been bid, we've received the bids and we don't have enough money to fund the bids to do the project. And so this would be the second project that would be coming to y'all next Tuesday if we decide to move forward with this funding, some funding mechanism.
When you say that, you mean, so like we built 200,000 into the budget this year to?
So we've had remaining fund, or leftover funds, not fund balance, but leftover funds from other projects that were, like the one we just talked about, Nap Road, we had a little bit of a contingency. Well, some of that contingency was left, and so we roll them into the next project. And that, we're giving y'all the full benefit of everything that we have across all of our projects to say, this is where we're at. The reason that you may ask, well, why did y'all wait so long to give us this presentation? We feel like we're kind of pressured a little bit on this. We don't want to make you feel like you're pressured, but we do, we want to use the money as soon as it's available. We don't want y'all to borrow a bunch of money, in this case, you know, 10, 12 million dollars, and then have it sit there in the bank while we go through a designing phase, while we do a bunch of work. We want to have stuff ready to go. And so as soon as, as soon as the money's available, we're able to use it. It saves y'all on interest, it saves us time, we're able to move forward. So that's the reason that we're kind of so quick to move. Near-term projects, these are, this is kind of a summary of those last slides I just saw you, of how much money we're looking for, or how much money we're asking for. It's a little bit more than what, than I think that we're going to go out to bond for, but I had a hard time getting it down past this. We will find some efficiencies in some of those projects. The big priority ones, if there's one that's, like the filter gallery was about $4 million. We may kind of push it towards the end and see how things hold up and do all the design work and get that stuff ready and get some of these other ones that are immediately, immediate, immediate need fixed first. So with that, I will yield the floor to Ms. Berger, or Julie, I think, if you'd like to talk next.
So again, one of the things we want to just caveat, those are all estimates, right? And these projects, they do evolve and you could, you could have some that get accelerated, some that can last out to five years, right? And so some of that's going to be based off of in-the-field prioritization, the ability to get engineering work and design work done, and then the urgency of some of the needs that are out there, in addition to the opportunity to leverage funds. Again, we talked about both some prior funding that was able to be relocated within the Water Capital Project Fund in regards to Water Street. We also talked about leverage funds that we were able to get through Texas Water Development Board. So some of those changed the prioritization of the ability for us to be able to push some of these forward. But again, we did want to talk within the business system and the business that we run in regards to water and wastewater, what capacity do we have over the near term to be able to take care of these prioritized needs over the next five years? And so with that, we've had a great, staff's done a great job, Julie and her team, in working with our financial advisors to be able to forecast out not only how is that business doing and what does that forecasting look like over the next five to 10 years, but then also how does our debt structure look like and the ability for us to pay off that debt and potentially feather in some new resource to be able to begin to move forward on some of these projects. Julie?
So as E A said, we're constantly forecasting, always looking at at least the next five years and beyond with the things we know to be true and then the things that we just use our best estimations based on historical data and other things to kind of see how our water and wastewater fund is doing in total and what that's going to look like going forward across the board. And as we talked about this summer, we don't want to be one of those cities that is without water hauling that in, or we have such a break that we can't take care of our customers in a way. And so I think these are much bigger than maintenance needs that we take care of as part of our regular operating budget, which is happening. You know, I like Stuart, we all run out of useful life, apparently, some of us sooner than later. I'm hoping, I'm hoping I'm 50% there. So what we did was took a look at, where are we?
More vitamins.
More vitamins, Stuart. What do we have on the books now? What's coming off? And then what does our, what does our kind of future look like? So what you can see here is what came out of the budget book and what we've talked about several times as far as debt repayment in the water fund. You can see on the bottom of 23 there, and we've circled it. What these are is annual debt payments, so actual dollars going out each year for each of these issuances. And so you can see that we will have one paying off completely coming up this year. And then you'll see here in about four years, we really have some substantial capacity coming up. So we kind of took a look at this to see how it fits with what the needs are. We don't feel comfortable getting to that $15 million level. We are feeling pretty comfortable around the, between 10 and 1/2 to 12 and 1/2. And of course, there's a lot of things that depend on that number, which will be interest rates and structure of debt and a lot of other things, which is what we worked with Hilltop really closely on. So really depending on a couple of those things, that's where we feel comfortable funding. You can see the green, oh, sorry, we've had backfill the purple there with the potential bond, just so that you would look like that at the max of 12.5, what those payments would look like moving forward. So the reason we asked Ann to come is so that she can explain more from an enterprise fund type funding, what a revenue bond is, what it looks like, so that you have a full understanding of that. And then we can come back and talk more about, if you have specific questions, what does that look like for us going forward and how do we proceed if that's your wish?
On this, on this, real quick, is this the one, is this where we say we don't want to be paying more than 30% of what we're bringing in?
35, 35 on the water sewer fund.
35, okay. And we'll talk more about that?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll give it to Ann.
I actually have a question for you, Vanessa.
Yes.
I remember we made a slight alteration in water rates this year, hoping to fund some projects internally. And I know y'all have done that in years past. Is this above and beyond that internal funding? What is this?
It would be, so, that's a good point. And so as we were doing these projections, we continued with those, both the asset replacement transfer that we continue to talk about and with the CIP transfer in the water fund. So that's been only at the $100,000 level. And as Stuart was talking about, we move money from other pots of money to backfill. When we move money over to capital projects from the water sewer fund, it becomes undesignated money unless it's going specifically to a project that you all know about for anticipation of things that might come that have to be done in an emergent situation. So we have some money over there. So sometimes we'll move money from indesignated to certain projects to finish out. As Stuart said, we have $200,000, maybe we need 50,000 to be able to do that, but we have some undesignated money. Then we can fill that gap and be able to move forward with the project on a cash basis without doing these bigger ones. Unfortunately, with the dollar amounts of these, we would be talking about additional debt because we don't have the cash within the water fund to do that.
But the short thing is, this council and previous councils have been trying to put away some in case there's a big problem we need to fix right away.
That is correct.
They've been prudent, in other words, previous councils have been prudent, trying to anticipate.
So there's two things to remember. When you increased water rates this last summer, that was really going to two primary tasks. One was to shore up operational expenses regarding inflationary causes, most petroleum-based products, which are our treatment products. So we'd shore up that front and then putting more money into the savings account, right? So trying to do the long-term Band-Aid for continuing to be able to invest in the system. That predominantly $500,000 went to capital assets. And then a very modest amount, $100,000, went towards the capital project account, right? So just trying to put a little bit into the covers. Obviously, $100,000 doesn't go much towards 15 million and really 100 million in need, but, but you're right. There's absolutely a nod from council on, hey, we, we do need to be putting money into the savings account.
On the previous slide, I noticed the different financing options that have been discussed and are used in the past. And I'm assuming that RB stands for revenue.
That is correct.
That's a great segue to Ms. Amberger's.
Yes, she's going to explain that to you in more detail.
Good morning. This is Councilwoman Herring said, what we're talking about today is for your consideration, the utilization of revenue bonds. And as I came to prepare for the meeting this morning, I don't think I've done revenue bonds for Curville since probably either the late 80s or early 90s. And at that point in time, it was for your EIC, it was sales tax revenue bonds. So we thought we'd spend maybe just a moment or two this morning and, and go through the difference between GO-supported bonds and revenue bonds. So general obligation bonds are secured by the full faith and credit of the Avalorm Tax. When we compare GO bonds with revenue bonds, they have a little bit lower generally interest rate. Even if you have the same rating, you would expect that your revenue bonds would have a slightly higher interest rate, and I'll talk about that in a minute. And with Avalorm Tax Bonds, you really don't have to have a reserve fund or additional bonds test or things like that. Where the real differences come with revenue bonds is when you're talking about doing a financing for an enterprise system, which your waterworks and sewer system is. And because that's encapsulated and you really want that to be self-supporting and stand on its own, that is where you have a little bit more requirements in the issuance of revenue bonds. With Avalorm Tax, you know what your taxable assessed valuation is. We track very closely your trends on the collection ratio, so we can project in a very narrow range what your collections are going to be. Well, with waterworks and sewer system, we don't know if you're going to have a dry year, a wet year. You know, there are events beyond your control which can impact the revenues that you have available, which is why there are a few differences between the two. So these revenue bonds would be secured solely from a pledge of the revenues from your waterworks and sewer system. And as a result of that, that's why you have a slightly higher interest rate. We went back and did a projection of your, of your rating that you might expect. We hired our colleague Ted Chapman about 14, 15 months ago. He had been with Standard and Pores for 20 years, and he actually wrote their water and wastewater criteria. So we had him analyze the city of Curville, and we have not gone through the rating process yet. It was way too preliminary until we get your feedback, but he predicts that you would be an A-plus rating. Your, your Avalorm Tax rating is a double A, so there is generally a notch or two difference between the two, so that's where, that would come out. And part of that is going to be based on what I will call the business terms that we put in there. But as such, we also went back and looked and said, okay, if you did a double A GO and you did a A-plus revenue with the name city of Curville, we think there'd only be about 11 basis points difference between the two. So it, it, there is a difference, but it's not a very significant difference. So we wanted to make sure we put that into perspective. The other thing that we get with revenue bonds, again, because you have no ability to control the weather, is we often get what's called a debt service coverage requirement. So that means you have to set rates so that you have a minimum requirement, and generally it's about one and a quarter times. You also have what's called an additional bonds test. So if you, if you decide to issue revenue bonds now, you have one set of bondholders. If five years after that, you decide to issue more revenue bonds, well, then you're essentially diluting the value for your existing revenue bondholders. So the way that we mitigate that is we put in an additional bonds test. And so we might say, okay, as long as your revenues available to pay your debt service are at least 1.35x, and it has to cover not only the existing debt you have, but it also has to cover your proposed debt, then that way, that's how your existing bondholders do not feel like they're going to potentially have a problem with their debt service payment because you're bringing on new revenue bonds. The other thing that is often required is a reserve fund. Again, the sole purpose of that is because if you have a very, very wet year, you can't tap into taxes. You want to make sure you've got some revenues available to do that. Now, I've had conversations with your staff, there are a couple of ways that we have mitigated that. And really, in particular, over the last three years, when you have this pot of money generally equal to your average annual debt service, and it was earning seven basis points. We went, you know, we had conversations with the rating agencies and said, this is such an inefficient utilization of those dollars because they're just sitting there. If, maybe they can't earn a lot, but they could be deployed into the system to help do some of the ongoing maintenance that we've talked about and that you've seen. So one of the, one of the other ideas that we have to potentially have to keep you from funding the reserve fund upfront might be to do a springing one, and so long as your coverage is at least 135 or 145, you don't have to fund it. But if something happens over two consecutive years and your coverage comes down, then that triggers needing to fund a reserve fund. So those are just a couple of the differences. Those would be some of the things that we would work out in more detail, but we wanted to at least look at it on a preliminary basis to make sure as we were projecting capacity, we were looking at it accurately.
Just as a comparison, flip back one slide. And, you know, a revenue bond is very similar to the way other business utility systems would work. An Aqua Texas would very much go out and issue a revenue bond type activity. Obviously, they don't have the ability to issue tax-supported debt. And so this is very much in keeping with the way that other utility systems that are, you know, less publicly owned, so to speak, are, are taking care of their business as an enterprise.
And so, to the extent that this is something that the council would consider, we did put together a preliminary timetable, which has the workshop today, potentially has us coming back for your council meeting on the 24th. From there, we would have to create a document, a preliminary official statement. This one would look very different than the last one that you saw because the last one you saw had information about your Avalorm Tax base, your tax rates. This one would talk all about your utility system, your top 10 customers, what is your rate structure? What are your available revenues after you operate this system? What is the value of the system? We would potentially have to go through the rating process again. We expect that we would have that rating on or about March 22nd. That would put us potentially before council on April 11th at your regular meeting at that point in time and be able to close on or about May 11th. So I know that there had been some discussions about potential timing for bids, and so we just wanted to put together a timetable to show everybody what we believe would be a reasonable process to undertake.
Question for Ann, before we get staff back up here?
Just looking at the timetable for the closing date, that's a Thursday. Do we anticipate doing it the Tuesday before that? Or are we looking at some, sometime after that? Just, I want to be mindful about what we're looking at when it comes time for the closing and the price that we end up getting and how we secure that.
Yes, sir, Councilman, great question. So the key date that, that I would be before you would be Tuesday, April 11th. So that would, when, that is the day that council would have the opportunity to review the bid from the underwriter and make the determination to accept or reject. Closing on the 11th, that is really more a staff administrative process, and we would not need council to meet on that day.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So have you already built in the assumptions for the secondary tranche or secondary debt that you would be looking at? You said we'd have to make some assumptions. As far as not to dilute the, the first debt funding?
So we have, we have on a very preliminary basis, looked out over a 12-year period and looked at when, mostly when your existing debt pays off, and that would create new capacity for new revenue bond debt. But the, the primary assumptions that we were focusing on here is I wanted to have my credit person undertake the credit analysis so that we could get a, a indicative rating of what we think you might get. From that, we send that rating to our underwriting desk and they prepare a scale. So basically, we ran to get to the 10 and a half and 12 and a half million in capacity, we utilized a projected interest rate of 4.6%. If you were to sell today, we think you would be below that, which is again, another reason why it's helpful to have a range with revenue bonds. So that was more some of the assumptions and making sure we were very confident about the 10 and a half and 12 and a half million that I think your staff is going to ask you to consider.
So I, I guess I asked this and then the next question because I just want to know what, if any actions that we may take would force us to raise rates and, you know, or be, or make future councils beholden to something that we're doing now that, that may be affecting future decisions?
Yeah, Julie, I think can address that question. So as you recall, council member, we, we had a pretty extensive conversation with council during the summer budget piece. There's really three pieces, remember, that we talked about. You've got long-term needs, right? That, that this council has put more towards in, within the, the long-term savings account and the pieces we just talked about. You've got near-term needs, right? So it, it's kind of addressing the, the near-term trauma, which is really what we're talking about today, and then the, the long-term operational piece, right? So we know long-term operational is going to continue to tick up as we see cost increases in both labor as well as chemicals and supplies, right? Council has said it's a priority to put more in the savings account, so those two have been drivers on, on recognizing that there are going to be absolutely increases that are going to need to happen in rates over time. This piece is really about, okay, what, what, what can filter in in between those, knowing that there is debt that is being paid off and has been paid off over time, right? So that's really what, so I don't want to give you the false impression that rates aren't going to go up in the future. They absolutely are going to go up in the future.
I understand, but I'm, I, it's not, it's, it's not locking anyone into a specific timetable, timeline, amount.
Correct, correct, yeah. There, there's additional long-term forecasting analysis that we certainly can bring back to this council over the course of the spring that talks about those three different components, right? Long-term savings, long-term operations, and then this, this debt component.
So I can speak a little bit more to that. So if you remember, I guess year before last, we came with a, a resolution for a multi-year rate plan, and that kind of went out the window with inflation and everything that's happened over the past few years. And so one of the things that Trina and I have been tasked with prior to this even being part of the discussion is reworking that model and what does that look like? And, and one of the things that's, one of the reasons we haven't brought that back to you yet is because we're trying to figure out what's inflation going to do. Is it going to level? What does that look like for us going forward without consideration of debt or, or new debt or no? Because that piece goes directly to maintaining operations. So we kept in all the things we've talked about, the asset replacement transfer. When we were doing our projections, we kept in, you know, a modest piece going to CIP from the water fund, just exactly as we budgeted this year on those two pieces. And then basically did our revenue projection just with looking at what's happened in, in history, applying some other, a whole lot of other things to it to say, if we had modest increases as we had originally proposed, this is what we think our revenue would look like without even consideration of putting a new debt in there. And then we said, okay, what is our debt payment for each year? And then backing out as debt drops off and to see now what does that do as far as cash in, cash out? How does that look? And that's kind of how we determined what we were comfortable as far as what we can pay for without saying we have to come do some big magnitude of rate increase to be able to cover our debt. And as Ann said, and we talk about all the time, water and wastewater revenues are very unpredictable. You know, we do the best we can and sometimes we have good years and sometimes we don't. And so our model, even without this, has to take those things into consideration. So we are still working on that multi-year rate plan, which is, you know, an item outside of this that we'll be bringing back to as soon as we're comfortable with what we're seeing moving forward as far as what increases are going to be in supplies and maintenance and, and chemicals and those kind of things. Just waiting for, kind of be, be comfortable with some leveling in those areas. Does that kind of answer that?
Yeah, can I ask one more question and I'm done? Mrs. Berger was talking about this required reserve fund and springing reserve fund. I don't really understand that what we have already established or what, I don't really know what that means.
No, so it would basically say, in, in certain circumstances, you have to set aside a portion in a restricted fund that let's say we had a bad year, we have that money set aside so that we are assured that we can pay debt out of that restricted fund.
Be setting that up through this process?
Bond covenants, right? So basically, it's giving assurance to, to your bondholders that you're going to be able to pay your bill, right? And so it has been historically a practice for them to say, you have to set a certain side, aside to be able to make sure you could cover your bond payment. What we've been in discussion in the market with is that's not really a great use of funds. Sure, it, because it, it would be better to be able to deploy some of that into the system rather than not gaining interest. But again, you have to make sure that your bondholders feel comfortable with it. And so we're exploring that opportunity. In the end, they might say, no, you, we, we want to help, we want to make sure we have that reserve fund just for bond payments, and that may be what we have to satisfy. But we just want to make sure we're looking at all avenues because there is no, there really is no interest being made in those accounts right now.
If we have to do that, we take that directly from the, the water, the water fund to be?
Correct, it's from the Water Capital Project Fund.
And we are still very preliminary, obviously, in this, but can you speak to our capacity? We were talking, you were talking about one and a half times, two and a times, and what exactly does that mean?
So right now, because you don't have any revenue bond debt outstanding, there, you, there, you have no requirements at this point in time at all. But if you decide to do this, we will be working to come up with what is your, an appropriate coverage test? What is an appropriate additional bonds test? How is the best way to fund the reserve fund? And though, your decisions on all of those will help to make the determination, are you an A-plus or not? So we want to keep them at minimum levels, traditional levels, that most communities who do water and wastewater revenue bonds, those sort of business terms that they're consistent. That will help us very much in the rating process. And so, like I said, we are just, at this point in time, still continuing to look at what those are. Relative to the reserve fund, as EA said, our hope would be that, that we can put it in springing. You don't have to take the money right now to do it, and that, that will be, that will put you in the strongest position and give you the most flexibility. If you do, if we do end up having to fund a reserve fund, there are two ways it can be done. One, you can borrow more money with your bond issue and fund the reserve. Generally, we prefer not to do that, but it can be done. The other is you can make a 60 monthly deposits over a five-year period, and they're all the same, and the market will allow you five years to build up that reserve fund. So you don't have to do it in the first year. You do have some time in order to build that up, so it won't, you know, it'll, it'll still take revenues away from what you would like to do on the maintenance and operation and asset replacement part, but it's not all upfront.
I'm sorry, did I have a? Did you, what, what, what's the, is this a 15, 15-year or 10-year or?
Actually, in this particular one, we were looking at 30-year. And the reason most of your bond issues here to fore in the past have been more in the 20-year range, but particularly with water and wastewater, we see 30-year bond issues, we actually see 40- and 50-year bond issues. For the most part, on the water side, your assets have over a 50-year useful life, and on the wastewater side, generally 35-plus useful life. A lot of it does depend on the environment and all of that. So it is very, very common for utility system improvements to be financed over a 30-year, but we do always go back and just check to make sure that the useful life of the assets is at least the duration of, of the amount that we're, the term that we're funding.
Okay, so working through this process, we came up with just some recommendations, and of course, this is going to be on council direction. Just based on our forecast and then working with Ann, we believe we have the capacity between 10 and a half to 12 and a half million, of course, depending on all the factors that we've just talked about. With your direction, if you so choose, we can move forward with creating a resolution and bringing that to you on the 24th in conjunction with the things that Stuart talked about that would allow EA basically to begin the process of issuing revenue bonds, not to exceed 12 and a half million. It's how we would write it. And again, that would have to come back to you as an ordinance for final approval, as did the public safety funds that we did. So we'll be able also to bring a resolution that would be similar to the one we did before, that would be a reimbursing resolution, just saying that any costs that are incurred towards any of these projects after it's issued then can be reimbursed with those funds. And that's just a, a legal terminology that we need in there so that we can use those funds for monies that may have already been spent toward those projects. So with that, basically, you would have several resolutions on your 24th, and the two we just talked about, then also requesting to award construction contracts for the two projects that Stuart talked about earlier that are not fully funded at this time. And those are the ones that we do have active bids on, and those are ready to go. Any questions on any of that piece?
So I know we're throwing a lot at you today. Obviously, you guys made some digestion time on that, but did, again, want to follow up with you all just in regards to where we left the conversation last fall and us continuing to do the work that you've asked us to do, particularly on some of those very near-term pertinent projects that we had engineered and that do have some other pieces that kind of fall in the line with that, particularly NAP Road. As you remember, NAP ties into that lowest drainage component and the ability for Text Dot to work. And the ability for Tech Dot to work through that Highway 27 bridge piece as well as kind of clearing the deck for that north lowest drainage project. The NAP project really has to be complete before that. And so, there's a few of these that are kind of tied together, which is why we've pushed forward on the engineering and continuing to keep the ball rolling. But as those costs came in, clearly, that in addition to just long-term system components that are past their useful life. We did feel like this was a timely conversation to have with you all. And then identify whether we've got political will to put resource towards those at this time.
As we look towards our revenue to pay this revenue bond, and we know inevitably we're going to have to raise the rates. What are, do we have, have we calculated the numbers for that, what that's projecting to look like so far?
So we weren't really figuring in raising rates particularly for issuance of these bonds. If you remember that multi-year water plan that we brought to you didn't have anything to do with additional debt. It'll have to do with operational costs. And again, as I said, you know, we saw some pretty hefty increases in the 23 budget as far as operational costs. Specifically in the areas that impact, that were impacted the most by inflation. All our petroleum-based products, we're not seeing the 9% that you're seeing in the general fund. We're seeing 20, 25, 30%. And we're, we continue to see those. In fact, I feel like we're just catching up, you know, with some of those, but seeing some leveling in some areas. And really, that's what we're looking at going forward when we're talking specifically about rates. Again, keeping those asset and CIP components in place as we put them in the 23 budget, that's what our modeling was based on. So once we had that in mind, and then we were looking at future revenues, we haven't looked at the rate portion yet. We've looked at growth, we've looked at historical data and growth because keep in mind, it's not just water and sewer revenues. There are other revenues within the water fund too that are continually growing. And so, just looking at the health of the water fund in general and what's left over. And I think from a cash in, cash out, and really that's how I looked at it is, what's left over with, using those assumptions we would have used anyway? And then do we, based on that, do we have the capacity to make this debt payment specifically until that, you know, you see that big gap there in that 29-year?
I guess I may have misspoke a little bit. I was, I am focused a little bit on the rates simply because that's what the systems are going to have to pay towards what we're asking from them. But I guess overall in general, just to make sure we have that revenue, have we calculated the numbers in terms of what that's coming from and projections? And I don't know how long y'all probably have looked.
We'll come back to you all with that forecasting piece and talk about kind of long-term projections. But we are looking at, we are anticipating growth within the system, revenue growth of about 5% year-on-year over the next, you know, five years or so. But we'll, we're going to hone in on that, we're going to bring that conversation to council.
Okay.
Because it's, it's more than just this conversation, right? It's, it's a longer-term, system-wide component to it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's good.
We're definitely looking at all of those pieces and how they fit.
Okay, and I'd like to, if, when we get that information, if we can be provided something of, to show exactly where that revenue is coming from, just a, a general understanding of
Absolutely.
its rates, whether it's a revenue stream from something else in the water fund.
Got it, yes, absolutely.
And probably a combination thereof, right? And, and growth in the system, new customers.
Right, exactly, all of that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions at this time?
No, I just have a, last summer, the number that was discussed overall for, you know, water wastewater infrastructure was something to the tune of what, 115 million or 115, yeah, it was some Yeah, huge number. And if this 10 to 12 and a half million on a 30-year bond structure, how does that, how does that play into the overall amount that we actually need to get our water wastewater infrastructure where it needs to be?
So flip back to that second slide, Julie. So it's a great question. So remember that not a big chunk of that 100 million was related to the collection system and the distribution system. So some of those are growth-related, right? And we would anticipate that as growth comes in, some of that is being paid for by new development, right? They're paying their own freight. And so, this is very much, as you saw, very much plant-centric in, in the vast majority of what these costs were. There, there's no development in the future that's going to pay for your plant, plant, maintenance, plant upgrades. That, that, that's just part of the system. The system has to reinvest in itself, right? So that's the vast majority of it. Now, there were a couple of components in there, certainly, that are collection and distribution that are near-term. And, and again, those are because those assets have just, they're, they're at the end of their useful life. And so, they are needing to be upgraded and, and reinvested in. But as you can see, almost everything there in that red and blue are more collection and distribution system. So we have other resources that come into play to be able to make those investments down the road. And that's not to say that this community isn't going to need to issue more bonds at some point. But we're pretty reasonably sure that the next five years, this, this 15, you know, the needs that the system most needs to, to be identified and don't have other funding sources.
Okay, okay.
Do y'all have a, y'all have, that was a really good question. Y'all have figured out, I know you can't specifically mine out, but out of 115 million, about how much is going to? What would, I mean, what, what are those hard costs to the city that development's not going to pay?
Right.
It, it really is going to depend on when that development happens, right? And where it happens in the community. Because there are, our community kind of has tentacles, right? That go up the highway systems. And so, it really depends on where that growth, the timing of when that happens and the, the, which, which affects the costs, right? As well as the intensity of when that development occurs.
So we have, we're saying we have capacity to do this and these, these are our highest need projects right now. As far as the, the future hourglass and, and prediction, it's just predicted specifically.
That's right, and it, and it's a, it's also, I think, easier for the development community to swallow collection and distribution conversations, right? When you say, oh, you've got to, you know, you've got to go replace a 30-year-old piece of equipment at a treatment plant. They're kind of, they're going to look at you a little funny and go, no, that, that's on you. That's, that's a system upgrade.
Absolutely. And then, and then, so, so I understand the need and, and I'm glad that we have them, so this is not a complaint. But my question is, when we get comments from people in the community saying, well, there's items in a 2008 plan that you haven't addressed. And, and we get these, we get these comments and all of these plans are coming. And there's no way that we can be versed on all of these plans from 2008 through 2022. And I have a hard time when I get those kinds of questions for citizens. And I believe in this 2022 plan, I believe in all the past plans. But what do these say about how the city determines those projects based on all of the plans? And what do we say when citizens say, well, if you've had a plan since 2008 and that priority hasn't been addressed? Can you give, somebody give us?
Yeah, absolutely. So those aren't, that wasn't a 10-year plan, wasn't a 15-year plan. That was a 30 to 50-year plan, just like the 2022 was a, was a 30-year plan, right? And so, those aren't all going to be, all, all 100 million dollars of those needs identified in the 22 plan aren't going to be done in the next five to 10 years when we do another update, right? I think one of the other key things is that things change. It's a dynamic system, right? We have dynamic growth, not only within our customer base, but also it's a dynamic situation as far as maintenance needs that all of a sudden may become accelerated because something goes out or something wears out in a faster way. And so, that's why we do reevaluations, right? But this is the best data that we've got on hand and the community's invested significantly in, in doing that update. And so, we're, we're, we're very confident in what the needs are over the next five years.
And I am too. I just, sometimes we get thrown off, or at least I get thrown off by those questions. And I have all confidence in what y'all are presenting to us.
Absolutely.
But I need to, you know, think through the questions that I know I've, I've heard before.
Well, as an example, you know, I think the, the retort to that is, you know, okay, community, if you're willing to go, even if you went out there and issued 110 or 115 million dollars worth of debt, we couldn't get 115 million dollars of projects done in five years. There's no way. We'll be hustling to go do 12 million dollars of, worth of projects over the next five years. So you've just got to, you've got to prioritize projects and you've got to be able to prioritize what the community can afford.
And we'll always be in this situation for these capital improvements, like buying your house for most of it. Okay, as we go for our groceries and our living expenses and then our biggest investments.
We borrow.
We borrow. Unless, unless, unless we don't have to, but.
I think Ann, I think you need to get on the road. Do we have anything else specifically for Ann right now?
Yes.
Thank you.
So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Kim, I didn't mean to interrupt there.
That was the end, no, that was thank you, no, I'm fine, thank you.
All right. Anyone else, anything that we need to?
I just, for the total project cost of 15 million, just want to clarify that we're looking at using revenue bonds for 2.5 million out of that amount. And so, is the remainder coming out of the water fund?
No, so we've got about 15 million roughly in, in near-term, next five-year capital project needs.
Right.
You've got capacity somewhere between 10 and a half and 12 and a half, depending on our, our continued research with the financial advisor and market dynamics. And so, really what we're looking for today is consensus from council to continue moving forward on this path and to bring you additional actions on your, your near-term agendas here at the, basically at the end of this month, to see how those match up. We're, we're not going to be able to dress off 15 million dollars in needs.
Okay, that's what I was trying to clarify.
They're also estimates, right? Some, some projects may come in a little bit better, some projects may come in a little bit higher. And so, it's always kind of matching that up.
Okay, that's what I was trying to clarify, whether we're looking at this bond to cover that entire project or if this is just going to be an ongoing with, at least until we get these near projects completed.
That's right, and we're always looking for other outside resources, right? There, as we're able to leverage other out, outside funds with state agencies or federal elements. But we know what the needs are, right? And so, we'll continue to try to match those up.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, do we have consensus to give them a go-ahead? Do, I think so. Proceed for next Tuesday.
Joe?
I hate that. It looks like it's a useful tool in this enterprise. You have to, you have to bring your A-game to convince people for, to, to use the credit card. And it appeared, I think they have, so, as much as I hate that.
So you're, you're, you're a go-ahead.
My go-ahead.
Okay, Roman, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, and Kim, all right, you've got it, so, thank you.
You'll see these items on your upcoming future agendas.
Yes.
And we'll continue to have this dialogue over the spring.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I really have to compare it to is, you know, when the water wastewater infrastructure failed at my house.
Inside.
I had not, I had not saved for it and it was $14,000.
Oh, my gosh.
So, you know, I mean, it is what it is and it's got to be maintained and at times, it's got to be replaced.
And it could cost us more if we don't look at it ahead of time than we have to with, so.
Yeah, we just got to be on top of it.
Stuart, thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
And Julie?
Appreciate, especially, y'all don't know what it means to those guys to be out there when they're, they're looking at this, how do we fix this? Boss, tell me what I need to do to fix this. They're right, you know, some, it's, it's time to replace someone. Thank y'all from, from everybody from, from the bottom on.
You have to bury it in the ground and don't let it be seen.
I know, right? Nobody knows it's there till it stops working. All right, Julie, thanks to your team for, for this. We'll look for numbers and good stuff here in the future.
We'll continue on with our research and bring you some good information.
Very good. All right, at this time, we'll go to 2B, City Hall Building, Security and Risk Areas. And EA, are you starting this off or is the chief or?
Yes, this is an item that is eligible with an executive session under 551-071, 076 and 089. And we'd, staff would recommend having that conversation if council is comfortable with that, within that section.
Yes, do, do you need a motion?
We need a motion.
And it's, I make a motion then to adjourn into executive session under 551.071, 551.076 and 551.089.
Second?
Okay, and all in favor, right hand please. And we have consent, we have approval, not consensus.
Are we staying here?
Uh, we'll go upstairs if you guys want to.
All right, thank you all. We'll see you back in a little while. We will recess at 11:04. It is 12:10 and we are back from executive session. And I believe that we do have something to bring forth.
Yes, mayor, I would like to make a motion that we direct the city manager to take action, to post the appropriate signs under state law to prohibit the open or concealed carry of handguns and other weapons into the meeting area of City Hall.
Do we have a second? All right. Roman?
Just briefly, I would just like to say that we were told that there is still a little bit more information that we can receive on this. And so, because of that, I, this is just me, would like to get more of that information before we move forward on the action. So for that reason, I just want to explain to people, without just the vote going through, why, why my vote will be my vote.
Thank you.
Mayor, I want to be clear, just for council member Garcia's, perhaps his peace of mind. Nothing's going to change, right? I'm going to, I'm going to tell you what we're doing, why we're doing it, the wording we're using. And I'll assign it to state law citations and, you know, that's it.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, I think, my thought is that what we're doing today is taking a bare minimum approach right now to offer safety to the public when they come into a meeting place where there are tense conversations going on and to protect the safety of everyone in the room. And that's what this is meant to accomplish and, and that's the point of doing this. And I don't know that anything beyond that needs to be stated, really. That's my, that's my opinion and that's why I made the motion.
Thank you, Kim. And I think that expresses, expresses my sentiments that we're doing this simply to protect everyone and anyone who is in this room for open meetings. Joe, anything?
Hey, Brenda?
No. All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your right hand. There are four opposed, one. All right, thank you very much, counsel. And I believe at this time, at 12:12, we will close this workshop. Excuse me.
Is that a new, it's a new sound you guys?
Very much.
Thank you, counsel.